Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for June 4, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with
Recording in progress.
In accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being live sharing. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation material when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate times. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
President, good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Better Braza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. We just a note that we are a six-member board today. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m. There are two, which I will read both into the record, one behind the other. The first is case BOA 1163709 with the address of 60 to 84 St. Alphonsus. Next, we have case BOA 1318050, the address of 90 Rantry Street. And if anyone has any questions, we can raise them down. Otherwise, turn it over to Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to grant the requests as the extensions as requested?
I make the motion to grant the extension as read.
May I have a second?
Second, sir.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, this is Sam. Can we include the timeframe of which these extensions have been requested, which I assume is one year?
Yes, ma'am. Do you want...
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next.
We'll move on then to the discussion of open meeting law complaint for April 30th, April 30th to 24th, appearing on 100 St. Alphonsus. Alphonsus. Case number BOA 1570022, ERT number 1559532, appeal.
Okay. Are there questions from... Are we...
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Caroline Burkhart. How are you?
Good. Are you welcome.
Good, thank you. Happy to be here. So I can provide a quick statement about this and then if you have any questions, you can certainly ask me. So a community group in Mission Hill alleged that the board violated the open meeting law during the 100 St. Alphonsus Street hearing on April 30th, 2024. This was an Article 80 project on a corner lot in Mission Hill with a permit application for the address of 1558 Tremont Street, which is the current address of the existing building that will be then demolished to build a new building facing St. Alphonsus Street. The community group contends that the project went through the Article 80 process at 1558 Tremont, but then at the ZBA hearing, it was presented as 100 St. Alphonsus. We recommend that the board refer this to ISD Legal to research or repair a draft response on behalf of the board. We can then put this back on the agenda for June 25th and circulate a draft response for your review and consideration before the June 25th hearing.
Thank you, Caroline. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to refer the complaint to ISD Legal advisor to prepare a response on behalf of the board?
Madam Chair, put forward a motion to refer the complaint to ISD Legal advisor to prepare the response on behalf of the board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have board final arbiter hearing scheduled for 9:30. This is case BOA... Case BOA 1332095, the address of 130 Marginal Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckel with Fletcher Tilton with the business address of 100 Franklin Street. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Fraser Allen, who's also on this morning. I believe Adam Glassman, the project architect, is also joining us. Just to go into a brief summary of what we're seeking here this morning. We're seeking a board final arbiter approval to reduce the previously approved project to a single-family dwelling. By way of brief background, this case was approved by the board to erect a new residential building at 130 Marginal Street in East Boston back in 2023. It was first approved on April 25th, 2023. At that time, the project was approved as a four-story residential building with four units and three parking spaces. My client, Mr. Allen, recently purchased the property and still desires to erect a residential building. However, he's seeking to reduce the size of the building in terms of both the unit count and the overall square footage. Specifically, as mentioned, he's seeking to erect a single-family home with one parking space for his family to inhabit. The proposed reduction in size and scale of the building would eliminate the need for much of the previously granted relief and shouldn't trigger any new violations. However, we would still need the side yard setback as previously granted on the right side because we're still maintaining a zero yards side setback on the right side. We believe this change will not only allow Mr. Allen to construct this building for his family, but is in line with the community's goals of maintaining single-family homes and creating new single-family homes. We believe the proposed structure will maintain the general character as previously presented and approved, but on a smaller scale by eliminating the fourth story and providing a larger rear yard setback so we can maintain some of the green and open space. With that, I'll happily pause and take any questions from the board if they have any.
Thank you, Mr. Eckel. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have G-Cod overlay and G-Cod and building code case, which is case BOA 1576263 with the address of 14 Clermont Park. And actually, which along with that, we have another case, which is BOA 1576262, also with the address of 14 Clermont Street. Would the applicant and/or their representative explain to the board please?
I guess I just in a way with Holland Companies. We are here to seek relief on two items. One of them is the building code refusal, which is basically just putting a debt onto this building. And the second part of the relief is its own code violation, which is 4G pod, which is the groundwater HR system that we plan to install on the back of the building. This is a... This is currently a multi-family building that we're changing to a single-family. We've been hired as the architects and contractor to build this building for a nice family that intends to do that. It's going to be a full-size remodel of the building and I'll keep this short and sweet. I'll let you ask any questions, say anything.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, is Mr. Semenelli on for the G-Cod?
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the plans be reviewed by Boston Water and Sewer due to its location in groundwater conservation overlay district and also that the project should receive a relief of the cited building code violation only for the single-family use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, there's two hands raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let's hear them.
Sondra, I said to request to unmute you?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Chandra Ixtet and I am a resident at the abutting property at 16 Clermont Park, unit number three, so the middle level. I have submitted an official letter of opposition to the proposals put forth by Mr. Holland. Our ownership group, our HOA of our building, is extremely concerned about the proposals, including Mr. Holland and their groups claim that they are not expanding and altering the footprint of the building. Our review of these plans find that not to be true, including that they are planning on extending the back of the building by eight feet and building a course three wall that will effectively impact all of the units in our building. I do want to allow some time for other owners of our group to speak, but I would request that the board please take time to review our letters of opposition prior to considering this. We have tried to be in touch with both the builder as well as the developer for this group. Multiple members of our HOA, including HOA board members, have tried to be in touch with them with no reply, which is extremely frustrating to us up until this point. We wanted further clarification prior to this meeting and we have not received any return of our requests from Mr. Holland of the group. So we kindly request that you please review our letters of opposition prior to approving this.
Thank you. Stephanie, did you say you had another raised hand?
Send to request to unmute you?
Hello, am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Oh, hi. So thank you for the opportunity to provide some comment. My name is James Bennion. I'm a owner next door also in the building where Chandra is and I just wanted to echo her comments. So that we are at 16 Clermont Park immediately, abutting 14 and I'm aware that several... There's a fair amount of concern in the neighborhood and I'm aware that several other owners are submitting sort of letters about position and I just respectfully request that those letters be given due consideration. There are a number of issues that are detailed in the letters that I have seen. I haven't seen them all, but they include the impact. So there's a proposed four-story extension punching out the back of this building, which potentially does affect groundwater in terms of changing the footprint, but it also affects historic because it's clearly visible from a public parkway. There's a structural issue because we have shared structure, rear wall, sidewall that the proposed plans... The interior plans, no opposition to, I think, the gut and renovate and returning to a...
Okay, please wrap up and add more information. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, get that read into the record and thanks again for your consideration and look forward to a response to our various letters. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Can the applicant respond to the concern about the expanded backyard back...
Yes, we've had the neighborhood meeting with the Clermont Park neighborhood association. I've been... I've reached out multiple times to Rar Armani. He's the head of that group. The relocation and the redistribution on the back of this building is not off for relief. We've explained that to the association. We had our owners meeting. We did all our meetings. We've also offered to some people that have been in opposition to take a meeting with them to go over the plans, but it's more of a coordination meeting. It's, you know, too, you know... And we've been... But they decided to go another route and just completely oppose. We're not looking for relief. It's an as of right. What we're looking to do in the back of this building is as of right. We're looking for relief on groundwater, which we have a groundwater plan and no water in and we're looking for relief for the staircase going up to the roof deck because head houses are prohibited in the South End. Both these things we're seeking relief are done every day in the South End and we're happy to coordinate with anybody in the neighborhood, but we're not looking for permission for something that's as of right.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, my understanding is that the relief for the building code violation is actually due to one means of egress to the roof, not necessarily the head house. Can the legal counsel correct me my wrong?
I'll have to double-check on that and get back to you.
Oh, that was for the lawyer?
That was for the... Yeah, that was for the applicant. That was a question for the applicant.
So the relief is that if you have a roof deck space, the way I understand it is you... The building code requires a head house, but head houses are prohibited in the South End. So this is a common practice to come into the CBA and ask for relief in this. And what we're doing and what we're providing, which is a standard in the South End, is a hatch and not a head house because people don't want their sight lines disrupted by head houses in the South End.
Thank you.
And this has been approved by the historical commission of the South End.
Okay. The violation that I saw was literally quoted as roof access egress to an occupied roof located above fourth story versus the head house. So I would need clarification from ISD. So I'm going to put forward... Can I put forward a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'm going to put forward a motion to approve with proviso for G-Cod and I would like to do a separate motion to do a deferral for the building code violation to get clarity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
What's the date?
Oh, sorry. We need a date from Samantha.
Madam Chair, we can do a date of July 30th.
Does that work for the applicant?
It does. Just one clarification. You're... The only thing you're looking for is... The only thing that's in question is this roof deck and hatch.
Yeah, the violate... Yeah, I'm looking at the violation.
The question is what the violation is.
Yeah, I'm looking at violation right now and the violation comment is roof access egress to an occupied roof located above fourth story. I want access that the actual building code violation is for the head house that you're actually proposing a roof hatch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have groundwater G-Cod only case, which is case BOA 1589398, with the address of 25 Job Street. The applicant and/or their representative is present. They explain the case for court, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Julie Makayovle, Legal Counsel with Neighborhood Health, formerly East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. We have a very straightforward proposal. We are looking to complete some paving work on the health center's parking lot located in the G-Cod district. The paving requires G-Cod approval only and we are complying with the appropriate infiltration standards. We've submitted the required letters from Water and Sewer and the letter of Nohar. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Semenelli with us again?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any public testimony? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Have a chair.
I'm sorry, Stephanie?
Raise hands, have a chair.
Oh, there are raised hands? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No raises.
Oh, no raised hands. Okay. May I have a motion?
I will put forward a motion of approval with provisos that plans be reviewed and approved by Boston Water and Sewer due to the location within G-Cod and that the plans be submitted to the BPDA for design review to mitigate the impacts of surface parking in order to ensure adequate buffers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? Sorry, Mr. Valencia?
Yes. Sorry, my internet is not working well today.
I can see that. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, G-Cod case is case BOA 1576714 with the address of 323 Commonwealth Avenue. The applicant and/or their representative is present. Would they explain, please?
John, are you on?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Madam Chair and members of the board, this is a reconstruction and reduction of occupancy from 10 units to two units. The cost of the reconstruction is $18,865,850. That amount exceeds 50% of the assessed value of the building, which is a trigger for G-Cod. The requisite approved plan from Water and Sewer and its compliance letter have been filed along with the engineers' holdhouse letters involved with... and has been duly propagated. A request is made for a G-Cod permit.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both G-Cod letters from you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any public comments?
There's no raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with proviso that the plans be reviewed by Boston Water and Sewer Commission due to its location to the groundwater conservation overlay district.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Braza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Start off with case BOA. Before we do that, I'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe. And we'd also like to remind you that, yes, we now have only a six-member board for the hearing schedules this time.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to case BOA 1589719 with the address of 66 Hommer Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain for court, please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. And good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the Tishner. With us is Eric Zacherson, who is the project architect. We can jump down to slide two. That's probably a good place to start. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a proposal that involves a 5,000-square-foot lot in the Harview section of East Boston. It seems that we are getting to the end of the legacy cases that were filed before the zoning amendment was effective for the East Boston neighborhoods. This was filed under the prior version of Article 53. Essentially, Article 53 would have allowed two family dwellings for a total of four units on the site. The amendments to the zoning codes would actually allow up to six units on the site if we were to subdivide this property and create two separate three-family dwellings. Our proposal will fall somewhere right in between. Our proposal will fall somewhere right in between old zoning and new zoning. Essentially, what we're proposing is a five-unit dwelling, one less than would be allowed under new zoning, and also including five parking spaces. We point out to the board that under new zoning, if we were to propose two separate three-family dwellings, we would not be required to have any parking on the site as the parking requirements for one-to-three-family buildings are no longer, it's no longer required to have any parking. We know that parking is a sensitive topic in this particular neighborhood, so we felt that the proposal to reduce the total number of units on the site as well as incorporate parking was the best fit for the area. We can jump down to the next slide, please. So seeing here, we are located in the new EBR3 district, and that has essentially been codified by the zoning commission on April 24th. So with respect to EBR3, while a single lot would not permit more than three units, this, this site would be easily able to accommodate, as I mentioned, two separate buildings for a total of six units. I think I have a quick, high-level comparison on the next slide, I think it's slide four. Yeah, so we could easily subdivide this into two, as I said, two 25-foot-wide lots by 100 feet deep and comply in all respects with the current zoning. Again, our proposal would simply do one single building in five units with five parking spaces. And so some of the violations that would be triggered under new zoning would be used because one single building on a lot cannot exceed three unless the lot itself is more than 55 feet wide. But some of the other more important metrics, I believe, that are important involve lot coverage and permeability, get to those in a moment. If we go to the next slide, please, that'll show some of the surrounding context of the area. So we see a bird's-eye view here of the current conditions of the site. There's an existing single family that would be demolished on a separate permit for the, for this proposal. Go to the next slide, please. Rearview of the building, as you can see, the context directly across the street is a mix of triple-decker-style buildings as well as two-and-a-half-story buildings. The new zoning for this area permits up to three stories and 35 feet, which is consistent with our plan. We are also proposing a roof deck, which is permitted under new zoning as a matter of right. Next slide, please. Just a couple of different views of the existing conditions, next slide. Existing building that would be demolished, can I get a proposal? Next slide, and jump one more, I think. And one more. So we had the architect, who's with us, Eric Zacherson, prepare an overview of what our building would look like in comparison to the existing buildings on site, and just showing some of the alignment in front and rear setbacks on the building as well as how it would fit relatively into the street context. If we go to the next slide, please. Jump to one more slide after this. So our site plan is here, we are showing a side yard setback on the left of three-and-a-half feet and a side yard setback on the right of three feet. That would be compliant under new zoning, would also be compliant with the former zoning as well. We do show a five-foot setback on the front, that is the requirement under new zoning. As I mentioned, the lot coverage that is permissible in this particular district under the new EBR3 would be a maximum of 60%. We're just slightly over that by about 150 square feet, and the reason for that is the request or desire to see three-bedroom units. In order to configure this building to accommodate three bedrooms, which we have a total of four, we needed a little bit more room to make that work. So our setback in the rear is also slightly short of a one-third setback that's required. However, we do meet the permeability requirement, which is the minimum of 30%. We're actually at 33%. So we feel that those metrics are being met under the new zoning. And again, just remind the board that this was filed prior to new zoning being enacted. With respect to the height of the building, if we can jump down to the next slide, we can start getting to the floor plans. Well, I'm sorry, yeah. So this is just showing the garage level. We do have an existing curb cut on the property. We would access the garage and allow for a total of five parking spaces, an enclosed garage. We do have, the next slide shows the lower-level unit, which would be adaptable for persons with disabilities, and that is a two-bedroom unit at grade. When we get up to level two, we show the, two of the other units, and those, those are the three bedrooms that we're proposing. Next slide, please. Third level, very similar to the second level, also has three bedrooms, and then we have the biroof decks on the upper level, which are compliant with the new requirements of zoning. So from elevation standpoint, we do show some rear decks off in the back for the second and third level and the roof deck that I mentioned with the garage, as you can see here in the front elevation. Next slide, please. Just our side view, and just to reiterate that we do keep this building within 35 feet, which is the allowable height limit under the new zoning regulation, as well as a three-story building. Next slide, please. And just our other elevation here, showing the context with windows. So as I said, we are providing the adequate number of parking spaces that are required in new zoning, so it's one space per unit in this instance, a total of five spaces, one per unit. This is intended for homeownership, so these would be sold as individual condominium units. Happy to address any comments or questions from the board regarding this proposal.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
It would be good to just hear from BPDA in regards to the argument that the project was filed before the new zoning was put in place and to get the BPDA's recommendation and also BTD's recommendation on parking space number five, which basically, yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Hampton, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Our recommendation for this project is to deny without prejudice. We understand that this was filed prior to the new zoning coming into play. However, we are reviewing the project now, and the one building with five units is not something that we support. We would recommend to everybody who's doing new projects in East Boston to comply with the new zoning that was adopted by the zoning commission in April of this year. So with that, we're on the record to deny without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if BTD is on?
If not, I can.
Not, if you need to.
They're removed, yeah. BTD recommended that five should be removed for maneuverability, so the question is to the applicant, you know, you have five units, but BTD is recommending for maneuverability to remove one parking space. Does that still work?
Yeah, I think through the chair, Ms. Bede Brazza, I think that the adjustments on parking are something that we're going to be seeing more and more of. I feel that most of the projects that we present now, there are recommendations from BTD to consider less parking on projects, and I understand that BTD approaches development now through a maximum parking rather than a minimum. So it, it does work. We can certainly try to work with BPDA to satisfy the concerns if we wanted to try to maintain five parking spaces, but we, we fully understand that that's their position that requires some work on our end. And if I may, Madam Chair, just quickly respond to Mr. Hampton's comments. Yes, we fully understand, and we're still trying to figure out and understand the intent behind actually allowing up to six units on one lot in the EBR3 district. It seems like it's an interesting approach. However, one of the things that is required in order to get six units is a lot that's 55 feet wide or more. I would submit to the board, and we're relatively, you know, new with this, working through some of these concerns, lots in this section of East Boston and most of the EBR3 districts do not meet 55 feet in width, so it's almost an illusory requirement that I suspect will at some point work its way up through a challenge process. But lots typically in the neighborhood are 25 or 50 feet wide. There aren't any 55-foot-wide lots, so 55 feet seems a bit arbitrary, but it should be pointed out that the use is actually allowed in the district up to six units. And once again, I would point out that compliance with the new planning of Boston zoning would result in us doing two things. One, eliminating off-street parking entirely, which I can guess is going to be somewhat of a concern for surrounding neighborhoods. And two, would actually allow for two buildings because a subdivision of this parcel is permissible, that there is no minimum lot size requirement under new zoning, and we would be able to construct a total of six units on the site. Like, once again, I just want to, we, we felt the compromise was to reduce the number of units as well as allow for the parking, which we felt satisfied a number of direct of other concerns.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Just want to point out to my colleagues that on the street, there is no topology for an open door, front door garage. There's usually off-street parking, and the topology also, it doesn't really exist as a kind of apartment block, but you do see side-by-side kind of units with both fronts. No further questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there was a, another comment by BTD, also, there should be installed an audio visual log to protect persons with disabilities.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's open it up to public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melo Viegova is with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. OMS hosted an abutters meeting for this project on March 12, 2024. Five abutters were present. The abutter to the back commented about privacy and building less than the currently proposed height as a way of mitigating the impact of the proposed changes. As the abutter expressed, that he feels like the sunlight will be blocked from his property. The head of the Harborview Neighborhood Association was also on this call, and he stated that though he appreciated the bedroom count, he would like to see less units so that the building does not eclipse the surrounding homes. The proponent met with the Harborview Neighborhood Association in March and in April. Residents expressed concerns that if their, if this project passes, which exceeds height limits in planning in Boston, it will set a precedent for other developers to propose taller buildings. Ultimately, the group voted to oppose the project with 15 opposed and six in favor. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Counsel Coletti's office. Based on community opposition and based on it not being compliant with planning in Boston, the counsel would like to go in a position of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, got one more raised hand?
Yes, ma'am.
I sent a request to unmute you?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Rich Garland, 37 Horace Street. I'd like to say I'm for this project, especially appreciating the compromise for parking over an additional unit. I've been in the community now for roughly two and a half years, and the project that was just completed directly across the street from us was very similar at parking. And I'd like to say that, you know, Tricky Lo does a fantastic job maintaining their worksite. And then again, I'd just like to say that I'm for this project and very appreciative of the compromise for parking over an additional unit. Thank you.
Madam Chair, got one more raised hand. I sent a request to unmute you?
Good morning, Austin Taylor, residence at 82 Horace Street, Unit 4. Been here for about, I think, nine, 10 months, and I'm definitely for this project. I think the fact that they reduced the, the unit size as well as added parking, I'm definitely for this project for sure.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I just respond briefly to one comment that we heard relative to height? I just want to be sure that the board is clear on this. This is compliant with planning in Boston's height requirement. The issue I think that BPDA has is the use as five units. And again, if this were a 55-foot-wide lot, this would be permitted as a matter of right. So, you know, the fact that we're reducing it down to a total of five units is something that, you know, we felt was the confines. There are other buildings within very close proximity, not specifically on Horn, but at the intersecting street on Moore, as well as Moore and Byron, have very similar-style buildings. And this board recently just approved a building directly behind this, the street behind this, a very similar-sized layout that, you know, followed a lot of the same concerns of the neighborhood, including parking as well as reducing unit count.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put forward a motion, given that it was filed prior to this new zoning taking place, I'm going to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that parking space number five be eliminated and that the project undergoes heavy BPDA design review on the exterior, so it works more with the massing of its contacts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I'm going to vote no. I think this should comply with the East Boston zoning. I'm also not in favor of trading off units in favor of parking. If anything, it should be the opposite, and I think some of these things could be remedied with the lot coverage by just reducing the massing of the building, and I would be interested in seeing a project with two buildings and three units each. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next. Next, we have case BOA 1563643 with the address of 101 Maverick Street. The applicant and or their representative is present, they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning again to the record, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me, again, is Eric Zacherson from Context, and we probably can jump right down, if we can go to slide maybe two or three. Give a brief history, that's a good place to start. So as you can see here, this is a corner lot condition at the corner of Orleans and Maverick Street. If we can jump to the next slide, I think I have some historic photos just to give the board a little bit of context, maybe one more slide after that. Let's go one more, get a close-up here. So as you can see, this building previously existed at the corner, it was burnt out a little over a year ago, and the owner is in the process of looking to rebuild. Our proposal would recognize that there has been, obviously, the certain changes occurred here in East Boston. This would be in the new EBR4 district, which would actually allow for a multifamily use up to four stories, a total of 50 feet in height. So our proposal would replace essentially in time the building that was there previously with a four-story, four-unit building at the corner. So if we can jump down to maybe slide eight, I think I do have a rendering, that's a little more photos. So the proposal here, the building that you can see to the left here was a separate project that was also burnt out, that has actually been completed recently. We do show the rendering of our building here at the corner. This is essentially following the footprint of the previous building that was on the site. I'm sure as this board may be aware, there are provisions out of the Boston zoning code that allow for the reconstruction of prior non-conforming structures. This would have been non-conforming under prior zoning in a number of respects, including the setbacks as well as the off-street parking requirements. Under new zoning, a number of those non-conformities would be eliminated, including the height, the proposed height of our building, as well as the number, total number of units, because this was previously located in the 3F 2000 district. So we are in compliance with the multifamily use. We are also in compliance with the height of the building, as we are, less than 50 feet, as well as the requirements concerning setback from the front inside, as those are aligned with both public waves of Orleans and Maverick Street. The new zoning does provide some special exceptions for corner lots. In this particular case, the lot coverage can actually be up to 75% for corner lot condition, and the permeability is reduced down to 15%. While we cannot necessarily meet those specific requirements, I think it's important to point out for the board that the building could have been rebuilt under prior zoning or at least under the provisions of Article 4 for reconstruction of, you know, damaged or destroyed buildings to the exact same footprint that was there previously. By way of relief, we would require a number of items under the prior zoning because we are replacing this with a new four-unit building. This also was filed under prior zoning with, before the amendment that was ultimately adopted by the Z by the zoning commission. If you can jump to the next slide, please. Let's go one more slide. So as you can see in our site plan here, we do maintain that passageway, there's a five-foot passageway behind the building, we have setback brief heat from that. So we do have an actual, actually have an eight-foot separation between the rear of our building and the building that's to our right along Orleans Street. That is the exact same footprint that previously existed on the site. As is typical for corner lot conditions, especially in the Jeffries Point and Maverick Square area, the building occupying most of the site is not an uncommon characteristic. Next slide, please. Just showing our floor plan layouts. These are all two-bedroom, two-back units, the upper levels. Units three and four are bi-level units. You enter on the third floor and have bedrooms up on the fourth level, which is a pretty consistent theme for these types of buildings along the, within the Jeffries Point Maverick Square neighborhood. Next slide, please. We do show our section plan, and I do want to point out this is in the CFRAD as well as Gcod overlays. Although, because again, this was filed before the enactment of the amendments to Article 53, we are not subject to CFRAD. We do show Unit 1 as being pertinent to, I'm sorry, the basement level being pertinent to Unit 1. That is for exclusive use area only, we're not proposing any habitable space in the lower level. Unit 1 would be at grade, and although, again, as I mentioned, this is within the CFRAD, the requirements for design flight elevation and base flight elevation calculations would not be applicable to this particular project because, again, it was filed before the amendments to Article 53. We do provide, obviously, the adaptable unit at Level 1 and then Levels 2, 3, the units 2, 3, and 4, as you can see going up. Next slide, please. Just our elevations, we do maintain this building height that is consistent or permissible under current zoning, which would be under 50 feet, and four stories is permissible in district. Next slide, please. I believe that's it, I'm sorry. So I'll pause there for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
And the only question I have is BPDA, you know, makes us, recommends that no units be in the basement, but I don't really see a basement. It's just on the ground floor, but it is such, it is such as to flooding. So can Jeff Hampton clarify? Okay, so the Unit 1, is that a basement unit? Because I'm not...
Right, so...
One, two, three, four, because my, this elevation that I have is that, that's on the ground floor. Oh, Unit 1 is...
This may be mislabeled, so, so Unit 1, it's showing Unit 1, the basement area in Unit 1. What you're saying...
You don't have it in the plans.
Yeah, so you, there's no floor plan for Unit 1.
No.
Yeah, not proposing any habitable space. There should be a notation of a Unit 4 towards the left side of your screen as well, because Unit 4 and Unit 3 are bi-level, back-to-back, but Unit 1, we're identifying that as exclusive use, there's an exclusive use area towards the front of the building for Unit 1.
Right, but there's, what's, what's in the basement? And you don't have the floor plan. What was, what were you proposing in the...
Storage only for the building, but exclusive use for Unit 1 in the lower level would be...
Okay, so only storage. Okay, thanks for reading the classification, and Jeff can also read the BPDA's recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, from Mr. Boyd, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Ms. Bede Barazza, like you, we saw that labeling and thought there was going to be occupied space within the basement units, so that's why we recommended that that be eliminated in our recommendation, understanding also that this was a fired building, fired damage building, my apologies. We still are in, on the record for denial without prejudice because of the new East Boston zoning, but now that the basement occupied space has been clarified, I, I think that's not applicable, like Attorney Lynn said. But because of the new zoning, we still are on the record as denying without prejudice, even given the, the condition of the building right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gómez with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for this project on November 8 of 2023. No abutters were present on the call. The applicant met with the Gulf Street Citizens Association, which took a vote in November to support the project with a vote of 11 in favor and two opposed. Voters commented on liking the brick concept and once stated, "I support the development and concept, and I think the four stories is acceptable at this location." I am opposed to this project because it was initially presented as approximately the same height as the abutting building, but in the second meeting, there is an acknowledgement that the building was taller than the adjacent building, but maintained the building height was 41 feet. The drawings presented by the project team clearly show the top of the corner is 45 feet, and the renderings continue to mislead the public. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr.?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both Gcod letters from the applicant.
There's no additional raise hands, Madam Chair. I can't hear you, you're muted, Madam Chair.
Sorry about that. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, given that the new zoning amendments allow for maximum height of four stories and 50, 50 feet, and there are buildings that are much higher than what is being proposed in the vicinity, I'm going to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes, I think the location on the corner wants itself to additional height and stories.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1589704 with the address of 117 Addison Street. If the applicant is present, would the representative, would they join to the board first?
Yes, good morning. Once again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linton's business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with us is Talia Kenistrow from Portland Companies, was the project architect. Madam Chair, this, you can jump down to the next slide. This project involves the demolition of an existing two-family dwelling with the replacement of a multifamily six-unit dwelling on Addison Street. Addison Street has received a good deal of attention over the past several years for new development. It is formerly, you know, we call the Economic Development Area, McCallum Highway EDA, which ironically would have committed this project basically as a matter of right under, under prior zoning, with the exception of use. So even though Addison Street is predominantly residential, residential use was previously forbidden under zoning, prior zoning, new zoning allows for EBR 4, or under the EBR 4 district, now allows for multifamily use, so that, that violation would now be removed. With respect to compliance with current zoning, this, as I said, would be a multifamily use, which is allowed, there is no minimum lot size or lot width, so we do comply with the 5,000 per foot lot. The items such as lot coverage and permeability can be met. 60% maximum lot coverage where 56%, with a permeability requirement of at least 30% where about 42%. If you can jump down to the next slide, please. So just showing here that the EBR 4 district is identified as being this portion of Addison Street, as you can see here, located next to the former McCallum Highway EDA. Next slide, please. So the quick bird's eye view, you can see it is a relatively larger nine-unit multifamily residential located directly next door, is a four-story building with a garage located at ground level. Can you go to the next slide, please? You can see here some of the contexts, you're going down Addison Street towards Saratoga. Directly across the street is a relatively larger commercial building, commercial site. You can see just off in the distance toward the top of the screen, a larger 200-unit multifamily residential project that was completed recently. Next slide, please. Just a different view looking at Addison, next slide. And here's our street view. We do have that four-unit, a four-story building, nine units located directly to our left. That tree is located on the property, so not necessarily within our, within the public way. That would be removed, and we did make a commitment during the community process to incorporate street trees that are appropriate species, because we do have the power line located directly above us on that side of the street. We could also need to make a commitment to tree DC for additional trees to be planted in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Just a different view here, looking down, next slide. And a little side view here, next slide. And we start here with our rendering. So we do incorporate some, the setback on the fourth level, which is a typical design feature that we do see in a lot of buildings in the immediate vicinity. We do include some balconies in the second and third level, the garage entranceway, which I assume BTD will ask that we incorporate a motion alarm for vehicles entering and exiting the building, which we have no issue with. Next slide, please. Just a different view here, looking up Addison, again, seeing that setback of that fourth level. Next slide, please. We jump down to one more slide here, floor plan. So here's our site plan. We do show our side yard setbacks are at minimum of five feet, both left and right, that is compliant with new zoning. Prior zoning did not require any side yard setbacks, so there was a condition that would certainly allow to fill out the entire lot under prior zoning. So we did set it back with respect to the proposed, at the time of proposed new zoning, five feet. The rear yard setback ranges, we do have going from 33 feet to about 28 feet at its shallowest. That left corner of the building is within 28 feet of the rear property line. However, we do come back to about 33 feet, we have those proposed decks on the right rear side of the building. That would be compliant with the, the new zoning amendment, which allows for the measurement to go to the building if the decks are being shown on the rear of the property. So we do have a requirement to maintain at least 33 feet for the setback, but similar to the previous project that we had, we did want to incorporate three bedrooms in this, so we do have a total of three three-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms. So in order to make that work, we felt we needed a little bit more depth on the building to get the size of those units to work. Other than that, as I mentioned, the lot coverage would be at 56%, and then the permeable area that would be available is in excess of 30% at 42%. So both of those comply with the new specifications under the amended zoning. Next slide, please. Just showing our parking, we have a total of four spaces that we are providing for a total of six units, and similar to our previous proposal that we talked about earlier this morning, we understand that parking would have been critical for this neighborhood. They've asked us to consider incorporating parking, but we understand BTD's approach is a maximum, not necessarily a minimum for parking. This would not necessarily comply specifically with new zoning, as it does require one space per unit, but we felt that it was important to incorporate some parking at the lower level as opposed to try to add more units, and that's one of the conversations that we did have with the butters during the planning process for this project. Next slide, please. So just illustrating the general layout and size of the units, so you can see we have back-to-back with some outdoor space both front and back, as well as a mix of three and two-bedroom unit. Slide, please. Similar layout as we go up the levels, to Level 3 and then Level 4, which would be the next slide. Jump to the next slide, please. Yes, our elevations, we're allowed to have up to 50 feet in height for stories. This is below that, I believe we're just under 44 feet for this building. We aren't proposing any roof decks as we provide outdoor space for each of the levels, both front and back. So with that, I'm happy to pause and answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I agree with the BTD recommendation. They suggest the removal of one parking space close to the garage door. I was looking at the site plan today for the parking, and it seems that the current configuration is very hard for cars to get in and out if there is a car parked on an angle next to the door, so that is my only comment, I'm going to put on the record, the comment from the BTD recommendation, as including the, that it should have a visual alarm to protect pedestrians.
Thank you. Mr. Linton, do you want to comment on the parking?
Once again, you know, we're happy to work with BTD if there's a reconfiguration through the design review process that we can work on. We were trying to lay it out based upon what we felt was available for space, but certainly willing to address the concerns of BTD first before eliminating any spaces, but certainly if that's the request, the requirement through design review, then we can, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there were also comments, most good, from the Disabilities Commission.
I think Mr. Valencia mentioned them, but if you want to reiterate them, please feel free.
For the Disabilities Commission, yes, the proposed wheelchair lift only provides access to one unit on the second slash ground floor. Both units on that level should be accessible.
So I believe we do have Talia Kenistrow here. My understanding is that requiring at least one accessible unit is, is what's required. I'm, I'm, I'll let her answer for that, that's all I agree, but I think we, they're available to do that, but Talia, why don't you go ahead?
I'm, I'm here, thank you, Richard. For the record, my name is Talia Kenistrow, Portland Companies. We have the flexibility to relocate that lift to be able to provide accessibility to both the units on that second floor, so within the design iterations, we can accommodate any requests or concerns that the commission has.
Thank you. Okay, was that, any other questions from the board? May I open it up to public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gómez with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for this project on March 26, 2024. The applicant met with the Harborview Neighborhood Association in March and in April of 2024. A vote was taken in the April meeting, and the group voted to oppose the project with a vote of 11 opposed and seven in favor. However, ONS did receive six letters in support of a project that were forwarded to the board. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Council Coletas office. Based on the opposition from HVNA, and it's not compliance with Plinys Boston, the council would like to go in opposition on this project. Thank you.
Any other...
I don't see any additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
May I, may I respond briefly, Madam Chair, just on the council's topic?
Yes, definitely, yes.
So yeah, so just a couple of things to point out. So this, this actually would be dimensionally a compliant building under prior zoning. The allowable height limit was 45 feet previously, but I would point out that the setback in the rear under prior zoning was only 20 feet, and there is no side yard setback. So this would be dimensionally compliant building, but the use was all that was essentially forbidden under prior zoning. The new zoning amendment makes the use an allowable use, and then we are generally in alignment, if not on point, with all of the zoning amendments, perhaps with the exception of the rear yard setback, which ranges from a compliant 33 feet down to 28 feet. And as I said, I think the critical component here is that we do meet the maximum lot coverage as well as the minimum permeability for the site, and that allows us to incorporate three bedroom units into the building itself.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I can propose a motion, see if my colleagues agree. I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a couple of provisos. One being that one parking unit be removed from vulnerability. The second being that an accessible lift be... The second being that an accessible lift be accessible to the two units. The third is to allow for BPDA to work with the applicant on the overall site plan of the building to increase setbacks to allow for a building that is more contextual. That's all I have.
That's plenty. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza? I didn't actually hear you say yes.
I said yes.
Okay, sorry. Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1581050 with the address of 6 Niren Row. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board?
Yes, hi. My name is David Freed, and I'm an architect at Chuen Company, and I'm here to present the project at 6 to 8 Niren Row. We are here just to get approval for two shed dormers on this existing center entrance colonial house, colonial-style house. Next slide, please. The dormers are conditional use, so we were cited for roof structure restrictions and also for a rear yard setback. The houses, you can see there's a lot line just behind the rear of this house. We're setback just two and a half feet from that lot line. These two dormers would give us much-needed headroom height in this third story of the house. Next slide, please. That's an image of our roof plan. Next slide, please. The building in particular here is the blue house, and you can see where we have modest shed dormer on the top floor. Next slide, please. Here's a view of our rear elevation. Do we have a side view? Yes, we do. There's a side view of our project. And we had an Butters meeting. We didn't have, there was no opposition at the meeting. And with that, I will open up to any questions the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freed. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Sean Green with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held to 6 Niren Row on April 3, 2024. Since that time, this office has received zero letters in support and zero in opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I don't see any additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam, shall I make a motion of approval with BPDA, the same review? Please pay attention to the roof structure.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Valencia? Sorry, went out of turn. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1535146 with the address of 23 Clark Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Mike Delarussa, developer here in the North End. I'm representing 23 Clark Street. This is a family-owned building, existing 10 units. The 10th unit was the ground floor unit, which was, at some point or another, it was a store, it was considered a commercial space. And since the owners of the building were continuing construction to all the other nine units one at a time, they were cited by ISD to install sprinkler and fire alarm throughout the whole building. So at this, they wanted to take the opportunity to turn this commercial space on Clark Street into a studio residential unit. So we are seeking relief for Article 54, Section 21, Off-Street Parking Insufficient, and Article 54, Section 10, Usable Open Space Insufficient. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So the building has gone under the construction for the sprinkler and the fire alarm systems and the renovations to the other units, because we received that on another, an additional permit, ALT 1404102, which allowed us to do the work to the other units that were existing residential units. And this particular commercial unit, we are asking for the board today to approve us to make it a residential.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred the judgment to this board. ONS hosted a Butters meeting on March 20. The applicant then went on to meet with the two North End civic associations, New Rutt and New Nick. Both offered letters of non-objection to this proposal. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Go up.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Next, we have case BOA 1572734 with the address of 3638 Elm Hill Park. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
May I just send a request to unmute you? Mike has sent a request to unmute you?
Uh, yes. Hello, can you hear me now?
Are you presenting his project this morning?
Yes, I am. I called in yesterday to let you know.
I'm gonna make you a panelist, okay?
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Mike LaFredo. I am the owner of 3638 Elm Hill Park. This project is to add a curb cut driveway and off-street parking onto the property, as there's currently no off-street parking on this property and on-street parking is very limited. I'm seeking relief of the front and side yard setbacks, excuse me, as well as the off-street parking requirements. If you could zoom in a little bit to the parking area in the front of the house. So for the front yard setback that we are seeking relief from, we are rebuilding the existing retain wall that is there. It's in very poor shape. So we're not moving that front yard retain wall at all. We're just going to rebuild it in place. And then on the east side of the plan, we are building the existing retain wall and pushing it back a couple of feet to allow for the 20-foot-deep parking space. And then we are also seeking approval for parking in the front of the house as there is not enough room on the side of the house to allow for parking.
Are there questions from the board?
Yes, quick question. Looking at the Google map, I see that there is a handicap parking space at this moment, located where you want to put the curb cut.
Yes, so that was for the previous owner, who was an elderly gentleman that needed the handicap spot. Currently, we are renovating the building, so there is no occupants there. But we would be able to dedicate one of these spots to handicap if one of the occupants required that.
But the driveway on the left, does that not belong to you? Does that belong to your neighbor?
Yeah, so that's for the neighbor. Pretty much all the houses on the street have a driveway, except for my house and then the one directly across the street at the end of the road.
Got it. Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred the judgment to this board. This application went through a full community process with ONS, and a Butters meeting was held on April 1 that was well-attended. The applicant then went on to meet with the Elm Hill Park Neighborhood Improvement Association on April 11. The only concern the civic had was to confirm retaining wall was structurally sound, which the applicant was able to answer. With that, I will defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I am bringing the recommendations from the BPDA and the Boston Transportation Department. Today vote was denied. I had a good recommendation based on the location of the proposed parking in front of the house. So with that, my motion is for denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
I would vote no on the motion, understanding, yes, it is front yard parking, understanding the parking condition as I know it in the neighborhood. I would just vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1557204 with the address of 26 Winthrop Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am an official of the Ethiopian Orthodox Church, Saint Michael, located at 26 Winthrop Street. This is in regards to adding an extension to our church for Sunday school purposes. So if you go to slide two, this is just a brief agenda. What I will be talking about, to just give you some context about our church and then its history within the world and also how it impacts African-American history. And then I'll give you a story of our church and the way we're here today, purpose of space, and then I will share with you the plot plan and some pictures. And then I will show you what we've done with the action items that came out of the Butters and the Neighborhood Association meeting. Slide three, please. So this is just to give you some context. So the Ethiopian Orthodox Church is a very ancient church. It dates back to the times of the apostles, so we focus mostly on, our purpose is spreading the gospel, and also has very much great impact on the Black liberation and also Pan-African-American movement. Especially here in America, it played a significant role down the civil rights era by encouraging leaders like Marcus Garvey and also other Black leaders in the country. So it's a very ancient church. Currently, one of our churches currently located in the historic Roxbury area. Slide three, please. So our church is registered or incorporated as a 5413 C3 in January 30, 2001, and we purchased our current place of worship in Roxbury in 2003. So we've been serving peacefully, quietly in that area for the last 21 years. We have good relationship with our neighbors. So our mission is spreading the gospel of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and providing spiritual guidance and education to the youth and also the adults and reach to the needs of our community. Our main focus and goal is educating the youth about their culture and also empower them to become active and responsible citizens. So we, so far, we, our priest ordained about 15 young US-born Deacons that will be serving our church, and they become also positive role models for the young and Ethiopian-Americans growing up here. If you go to the next slide, please. So we are here today because our church purchased this shed that you can see the back in last, in December 2022. The purpose is to serve as a Sunday school computer room for our younger children. And then this will help us educate the youth about their heritage and faith, and then it will instill responsibility and citizenship. We will not create any inconvenience for our neighbors as our services are mostly on Sunday. So it will not have any impact on the, and also it will be used only a few hours on Sundays. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the space is the day of use will be on Sunday mornings, mostly an hour or two hours every Sunday. So when kids first come to church, they attend service in the main part of the building. And then after that, when the kids are separated according to age, kids in the age of probably six to 10, they go to the shed with their teacher to attend Sunday school.
Sir, can I just clarify? So this is already dealt, correct?
Yes.
Can you just speak to the, what the violation is, you know, for the space, so that we can assess that?
Madam Chair, I think it was just an illegal use of the accessory structure. So they're just trying to correct that.
Yeah, I mean, it says insufficient side yard setback, but I don't, you know, I don't know if that's a... Did you already build this? Did you build this, or was it already there?
No, we bought this and we had a permit when we purchased this, so the inspector approved the placement. But I think the violation was we finished the inside. Our community members, they collaborated to finish it and start using it. That's completely, I'm assuming that's a violation.
Gotcha. Okay, so are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Hello, and thank you, Madam Chairman of the Board and Board members. My name is Jeremy Benruth in Office of Neighborhood Services. Office did hold a community process for 26 Winthrop Street. The Butters meeting was held on April 10. The civic meeting on April 16. During both meetings, concerns were raised in regards to trash and ruin activity, which was addressed and exterminated due to a survey and concluded that there were no ruins on the property. There was very little opposition. We do have a support from a few constituents during the meeting. The civic group did show, they did show support and received one letter of support from the civic group as well. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that to address the rodent or pace control issue, we set up bait boxes with professional exterminator.
Any other raised hands?
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion.
Uh-oh.
I think you said approval.
Okay, that was approved. Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge? Okay. Mr. Stemberich?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia? All right. I think he's a little frozen. We'll keep going. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia, do you want to try going off camera? All right, well, the chair votes yes, and that is, no. Okay, great, thank you. We can hear you now. Motion carries.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Not to be picking Madam Chair, but I have 10:59.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? All right, see you back in five minutes. Thank you.
My business address at 51 Thompson Road. We're here today seeking a deferral. There were some changes made to the plans, and the ISD Plans Examiner has yet to review those plans. So we are seeking a deferral to come back after the plans are reviewed.
Thank you. Samantha, any date?
As soon as possible. We greatly appreciate it, Samantha.
We can do a date, Madam Chair, July 30th.
Okay, Mr. Small?
That's fine, July 30th.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion to the deferral till July 31st.
July 30th, Madam Chair.
July 30th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Vote.
Matt?
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Matt Mueller of Hugh Architecture. I'm representing Dorchester Design Collaborative, part of the Welcome Home Boston program. We submitted changes to a design and we had...
Can you tell us what project you're referring to, please, so that Mr. Stenbridge can read it into the record?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're seeking a deferral, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
We are... I don't know the BOA number, but it's 104 through 108 Norwell Street.
So that would be for three cases. Case BOA 1596026 with the address of 104 Norwell Street. Also, case BOA 1596034 with the address of 108 Norwell Street. And along with those two, case BOA 1596032 with the address of 106 Norwell Street. Would you go ahead and explain further?
Yes, we made some minor modifications to our group two dwelling units on the first floor, which they knew violations were flagged, but these new violations are actually on the original set. But since they weren't flagged originally, I think we're being required to go back and send out notifications to the abudders.
Okay.
I do hope we can do this as soon as possible as this is... we're on a pretty strict timeline with this project. So anything you can do, help me out, it'd be appreciated.
Let's find out what's available next. Samantha?
Steph, Steph, is this the date of July 16th?
That's correct, Samantha.
Yeah.
Yes, so we have... this will be heard next July 16th, if that's all right with the applicant, Madam Chair.
Matt, is that...
If that's as soon as you can do it, that's perfect.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to July 30th. Would you like to extend?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Okay, thank you all.
Chair, chair members of the six-member board?
Yes, as a reminder that we are a six-member board.
Okay. Returning to the hearing scheduled for 11:00 AM, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1565805 with the address of 40 Concord Square. Along with that, we have case BOA 1565797 also with the address of 40 Concord Square. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain cases to the board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, with a mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Madam Chair, we're seeking three reliefs. One is building code. The other is a G card permit, and the last is variances. May I start with the building code?
Yes, please.
If we could scroll down to show the front of the building, which would be A21? Yes, up, 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 yes. This is a four-story building under the state building code. Access to the proposed roof must be by what the building code terms a penthouse. We commonly call it a headhouse. We are proposing a hatch access. If a penthouse is required, it would require zoning relief as drawn to the proposed roof deck conforms to the zoning code as a matter of right. The property is located in the South End Historic District. It is listed as a contributing structure under the designated South End National Historic District. The proposed hatch is a common means of access to roof decks and would not create an unsafe condition. Boston Fire has adequate equipment to reach the roof of this structure. The hatch would be in a... The proposed two-family structure in the roof deck is for the exclusive use of the upper unit. We would suggest that the proposed hatch is an acceptable compliance alternative to the headhouse in seek of variance to utilize the proposed hatch.
Questions from the board? Do you want to proceed with both, or are you looking to...
I would suggest a vote on the three individually. Whatever the... I can go forward.
Why don't you walk us through the whole thing and we can vote accordingly?
We seek a G card permit. The requisite Boston Water and Sewer approved plan, their compliance letter and the whole harmless letter have been duly filed with the board and with the Superior. And the third is variances. If we could scroll to the next slide. If we could down one. This shows the proposed rear decks. They are true. There was extensive meetings concerning this deck and a compromise substitute plan was submitted and approved by ISD. The section to the left, which shows the red inked area, the change to the original plan was to pull the proposed deck back from the adjoining property at 42 Concord Square, three feet, to change the way the proposed door would open, so it would open from the left to the right. And that the initial portion of the deck would only project four feet out and then would continue to project six feet around the bay. The bay is a substantial portion of the rear of the building. If we could scroll to the next slide. This shows the proposed placement of the condensers. That's in back of the proposed roof, the black area. It is set back five feet from the rear wall. It is concealed and parked by the proposed deck, and we respectfully suggest that it would have minimal effect upon the profile of the roof or the street state. Again, the red blocked area show the two proposed decks projecting into the rear yard. And with that, I would be open to questions from the board.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board? Here in non-man public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor is offered to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held in Butters meeting on February 28th. After there were some concerns raised from some neighbors about setbacks in the size of the decks, the applicant met with some of those neighbors. It did a walkthrough of the site, I understand, in early April, agreeing to reduce the width of the deck from six to three feet in the gap between 42 Concord Square and this proposal. I understand that some of the residents were pleased with that, although some others potentially would have liked to have further reductions. They then went on to meet with the Claremont Neighborhood Association. Now with that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Seminelli?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Seabrook Water Trust. We have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
You have one additional raise hand, Madam Chair.
Please.
I'd like to request to unmute you.
Hi there, thank you so much. Hi, John Moran, thank you for walking through these plans again. It's Kate Ledoux, adjacent to number 40, I'm 42. And we did, all of us, all of the owners here, did meet with Sean Kennedy and discussed some compromises as the initial proposal for those decks were huge. My biggest concern is that they are right next door to all of our bedrooms. So, and Sean was able to appreciate that, which I was glad for his empathy. While I want Sean to be able to carry on with his livelihood, there had to be a misunderstanding because the big issue is where do they start the deck from our building? And I just want to provide context that it's... The back of the building for both of our buildings are not flat. They bow out, so our bedroom is bowed out, right? So the ask was to start it where the actual window currently exists. I... Sean had said three feet. I thought it was three feet from the downspout. And when I saw the plans, it was three feet from the property line, which is so... it's basically they could change my TV channel. And so my only ask is while I appreciate the initial accommodation, the proposed deck is huge, and that's fine. But if we could just have the start of the deck five feet from the property line as opposed, you know, right where the window is, instead of the three feet from the property line, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moran, can you comment on that?
Yes, at the actual site meeting, many of the abudders at 42, I should say, the abudders from 42 who attended the site meeting agreed with Sean by pulling the deck back three feet from the property line and also changing the opening of the doors so it would swing out, so the people going out onto the deck would be facing the bay. We thought we had agreement. My understanding that one of the... That we had an email confirming that they were very pleased with this plan. And then I know Sean had received some communication from Kate. I don't know as of last week whether they actually talked, but we thought this was the compromise. We submitted the compromise to the board and sent copies to all those who had attended the site meeting and had received no objection from those attending the site meeting. I thought we had reached a certain compromise.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, have you gone in front of the South End Landmark Historic Commission for a design review?
Yes, they have approved.
As it is?
As proposed, yes.
Okay, great, no further questions.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Two motions.
Three motions, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion with a proviso that the project gets reviewed by Boston Water and Sewer Commission, that the project also gets reviewed by Boston South Landmark Historic Commission, and the third one would be that the project receives a building code relief for a roof hatch, access to the roof, and that's it.
Okay.
G card?
I did, I said G card.
I'm sorry.
Okay, may I have a second? Mrs. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I may note, there would be... I would draft two separate opinions for the board, one for building code, since that was a separate appeal, and then the second for the zoning G card relief.
Okay, Caroline, any concerns, questions?
Here. No, so just to clarify, it would be two separate letters, one for G card and one for the building code.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1568134 with the address of 283 Longwood Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Rachel Alexander, and I'm also joined by my colleague, Jan Henderson. We are writing to receive permission from the board to continue to host food trucks at this pullout, which is at 283 Longwood Avenue, abutting Boston Children's Hospital Patient Family Garage. This program started in July of 2020 during the pandemic as part of a greater neighborhood-wide placemaking initiative. And since then, we have been running under a temporary permit with the ISD. And when seeking to renew our permit again in September of 2023, we were asked to seek an appeal with the zoning board. I'm happy to kind of answer any other questions. But I think it's, you know, we have the approval from Boston Children's Hospital and have provided all the support. Here is a certified plan. Just overall, it's been a great opportunity for us to be able to work with both existing food trucks and young entrepreneurs, you know, those are permanent in the city. And, you know, we just have like a critical mass of people in Longwood Collective or in the Longwood neighborhood that I think really appreciate having a variety for smaller children's space, happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Here in non-man public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had deferred to the judgment of this board. With the applicant circulating flyers to abudders within 300 feet, we're unaware of any concerns at this time without refer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
I would prefer...
Is there a second?
Back there.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Next, we have case BOA 1589854 with the address of 26 Rose Claire Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Mark Waterfall, the owner of this property. 26 Rose Claire Street is currently a two-and-a-half-story building with a legal occupancy of a two-family dwelling located in a 2F 5,000 Zone sub-district within Dorchester's Article 65. As indicated on the architectural drawings, the building actually currently has a third dwelling unit in the attic level. This was an existing condition when this property was sold in 2017 to an ownership unit, which at the time included but was not controlled by my client. Approximately one year ago, my client bought out his business partners and immediately undertook to legalize the occupancy of the currently vacant third unit, legalize the occupancy of the building as a three-family dwelling. In so doing, he is also proposing to square off the roof and convert the building to a three-story structure. There is an existing curb cut and driveway on the right side of the building leading to a garage in the back, which is in poor condition. This garage will be razed, to be replaced by three surface parking spaces. As these spaces would occupy an area actually less than the current garage footprint, this change would result in additional landscaped open space in the rear yard. The building's foundation footprint will not change, but the first and second floor rear decks will increase slightly in size, and a new deck will be added to the third floor level at both the front and the back of the building. There would also be a 12-by-20-foot roof deck for the exclusive use of unit three, be accessed directly from the unit's rear staircase. Unit one on the first floor currently has four bedrooms, and this will not change. Unit two on the second floor currently has three bedrooms, and this also will not change. Unit three, which is a small unit in attic, which again is currently vacant, will grow from a one-bedroom, two- or three-bedroom unit as the half-story attic will be converted into a full floor. With respect to the zoning relief request, the variance is needed for the proposed three-family use. While zoned 2F, there are numerous three-family dwellings in the immediate neighborhood. While preparing for today's hearing, I actually came to notice that I represented both 22 Rose Claire Street, which was converted to a three-story, three-family in 2017, and 24 Rose Claire, which was converted to the same in 2018. There are two violations related to the width of the lot, which is just over 44 feet, as opposed to the 50 feet required by code. This is an existing condition, of course, which cannot be changed and which is a typical lot width for the neighborhood. Also typical for the neighborhood and reasonable for the proposed use is the proposed floor area ratio of .9. Present FAR of the building is .77, whereas the maximum FAR in the zone is .5. Relief is required for the proposed three-story height. Building's height would increase to 34 and a half feet, which is zoning compliant, but the story height limit in this sub-district is two and one-half stories. Once again, in terms of neighborhood context of the 15 buildings on the even side of this block of Rose Claire Street, 13 of those 15 are three-story dwellings. Relief is also required for a front yard setback violation arising from a new third-floor porch, which is within the areas of porches existing at the first and second floor levels. And there's a side yard insufficiency, which owes solely to the vertical extension of the building within its existing footprint. So it's a vertical expression of a pre-existing setback, non-conformity. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you. Mr. Moranci, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I would like to know what's PDA's recommendation on this project. He conceded to submit any, and so I would like to know from Jeff Hampton, what's his opinion?
Thank you, Ms. Bede Barza. We didn't have any information for this, which is why we didn't submit a recommendation. But I did go back, like Attorney Moranci had said, to look at the 22 and 24 Rose Claire. And as he said also, that this is almost an exact replicate of zoning review. In those two cases, we recommended approval with design review.
Okay, great, thank you. And is... why is there a reason to propose a roof deck when you have adequate roof deck at the rear of the property for each unit?
I think it was just viewed as an additional benefit for the third-floor unit. Now, there are nice views, you know, from this location, and just the client believed it would be just additional, you know, nice open space for the third-floor unit.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Let's open it up to follow-up testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ross Cockrumb, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office held in Butters meeting in March of this year, where residents joined in and they shared some concerns over parking, and were just curious about construction timeline and et cetera. They also presented to the local civic association. However, I do not have a letter of support or opposition on file at this time. Likewise, I do not have any letters of support or opposition on file by the abudders or constituents. At this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council of Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to unrecord and support the proposal. Thank you.
No additional...
I'm sorry, Stephanie. Madam Chair, George Moranci, I can accurately report that the McCormick Civic Association did in fact vote in favor of the project they wanted to support.
Thank you.
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Stephanie. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion. Given that in the vicinity, there are no exterior stair leading to a roof deck, there's only one example, you know, four houses down that has an internal stair access to the roof. With these reasons, I do think they have adequate use of extra space from the rear deck. I would like to perform a motion of approval with a proviso that the project removes the roof deck and roof deck access from an exterior stair.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, since it's 11:35, I will ask at this point if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 rediscussion timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. 10 Thompson Square, please.
So that would be case BOA 1304433 with the address of 10 Thompson Square. Would you go ahead and explain? Jim Moranci?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway, representing the petitioner. Madam Chair, I was actually prepared to request a deferral before I became aware this morning that this is a six-member board, which means, of course, I'm entitled to an administrative deferral. This would allow us to benefit from spending some additional time. We're very, very close in working with both the Charlestown Neighborhood Council and the Design Professional members, architects and otherwise, the Charlestown Preservation Society. We've reduced the building from four stories to three stories, and we're currently just working on some design issues since this is viewed as a very sensitive site at 10 Thompson Square, historic location in Charlestown. So I would like to take benefit of an administrative deferral just to allow us some additional time to finish up work with those groups and hopefully have full community support.
So what timeframe are you looking for? Because you have deferred multiple times already on this one.
Yes, that is true. So, you know, we probably have just a couple of meetings left with each group. I would suggest, I think the board maybe was out to July 30th the last time I heard a deferral. So maybe a next available date after that to give us at least a couple of months to continue to work with the community.
Samantha, what are you looking at?
Madam Chair, we have August 13th or August 27th?
I think August, let's be safe and say August 27th. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to defer to August 27th?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We need further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 AM timeframe? We have none.
Is there a hand, is a hand raised?
John Lyons, are you here for a deferral?
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is John Lyons. I'm an attorney with an office at 80 Copeland Street in Quincy, representing the proponent 10 V. We're requesting another deferral to give us sufficient time to continue working with two different civic associations. We have met twice with the River Street Association.
What project is this for? What is the address?
I'm sorry, this is 40 Temple Street, 40-42.
Okay, please allow Mr. Stenbridge to read it into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that would be for case BOA 1515203, with the address of 40 to 42 Temple Street. Would you continue, sir?
Sorry for the interruption. Again, my name is John Lyons. My address is 80 Copeland Street in Quincy, representing 10 V, the proponent. We're requesting another extension to permit additional time to continue working with two civic associations. We did meet twice with the River Street Association, then we met with the E-Board for Lola Mills, and again with the Lola Mills General Membership. The present concern relates to the architectural style.
Sorry, you don't need to go into those details at this time.
Okay, we're reworking the plan, Madam Chair. That's the essential.
Thank you. What are you looking for as far as return?
August 13th date, is that open?
Samantha?
We can do August 13th, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to August 13th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
There's another hand raised, Madam Chair. I'm gonna...
Okay.
Send to request to unmute you? Nadeline, I sent to request to unmute you?
Nadeline, are you here to request a deferral? Okay, can you give us the address?
80 Temple Street, Medellin.
I'm sorry, what street?
80 Temple Street, Medellin.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Sorry, what was that again? Astoria Street?
86 Astoria Street, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be for two cases, for Woodsooth, that would be case BOA 1538686, with the address of 86 Astoria Street. And along with that is case BOA 1538740, also with the address of 86 Astoria Street. Would you go ahead and explain to the board, please?
Yes, so the last time I was on, they said, you guys said you want to, want me to meet with the city, with the Medellin and the Westellin community, but I get a date for the 24th of July, of June.
Okay, so you, so you need time in order to meet with them.
Yes.
Samantha, what's available after that?
Steph, is this on for July 16th in our books?
No, you can defer it to whenever you...
Okay, great, so we, the next available date, Madam Chair, would be July 30th, if that's enough time for the applicant?
Is that enough time for you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to July 30.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much. We should...
Turning to the 11 o'clock timeframe, we will move on to case BOA 1592271, with the address of 120 to 124 Babson Street. With the applicant and or their representative's presence, who they explain to the board, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, 686 Architects, with the business address of 10 Forbes Road and Braintree House. Here before you on 120 Babson Street. This is actually a sister project of 43 Fremont Street. The lot was subdivided. There was a rear yard violation that was created on the existing lot in the existing building. We've, the Fremont Lot application has been approved. This violation was just recently caught, and so the, when we originally filed the application, this violation was there, but it was not heard at the board. It should have been. We don't know how it happened, so we're here to correct that today.
Questions from the board? Here, eight-nine, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, regarding anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, previously, this went through a community process, went before the board. They had letters of support from butters on that street. There was also some concerns and opposition from the local civic association. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
That may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I just put, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Back to case, we've been deferred, so that takes us to case BOA 1582882, with the address of 305 Chestnut Avenue. The applicant and or their representative's presence, who they explain to the board, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Louis Centaro, I am the consultant engineer for this project, and this has two-part presentation, so I can also show the existing conditions of the existing structures. What we are proposing here is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a six units. We are proposing an infill on the left-hand side of the building, and an infill on the rear of the building. Also, we are adding doors to the rear portion of the structure. If you could please go to the next slide. So this is the existing condition. We are adding one dwelling unit in the basement towards the rear. This portion of the building right here, we're going to maintain it as it is. Next slide, please. This is the first floor. Again, the left-hand side includes the infill, which would be that area, and two infills in the rear of the building as well. And this area will contain two dwelling units. One entrance would be on the left side. The second floor is basically a duplicate of the first floor with two units, front and rear. And finally, on the next slide, we have the attic space, which will be converted into one unit, and we are adding three doors on the right side of the building. Next, please. So these, these are the elevations, and we are trying to preserve the front of the building as it is now, and the addition is almost invisible towards the rear. It would be located right behind the bay and in line with the bay on the left-hand side. And you can see the elevation that has the three doors. We are increasing the height of the rear portion of the structure by just about two feet after the reconstruction. And this is the entrance to the basement unit on the right, left-hand side of the building, and also the infill on that side. So this building has four violations. We have added six parking spaces as well. The parking is insufficient, we are short two spaces. We have the ratio of one per unit, the floor area ratio is in excess also by a fraction of .08, or about 700 square feet. And the other violation is the use, which six units is not permitted in that area. With that, I would like, just to give us some context to the presentation, I would like to go to a binder that I shared with Stephanie. Now, this building, as you can see from those, if you're going to stop there on the first two pages, this building has been condemned in at least two occasions. There is a notice from the institution from ISD, this building was condemned back in 2000, or I believe, 2006, I'm sorry, and again in 2020. And the building has been disprepared for many, many years. The new owner decided to take over and make these conversions and renovations. You go to the next slide, please.
You're muted, Louis.
The building is vacant, and this is the present condition, and it has been like that for at least, I would say, the last three or four years. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is the building, the both buildings on either side are taller than our building, except for the cobula. Next slide, please. And this is the area on that side where we're proposing the infill, in line with that bay window in the front. So immediately behind the front portion of the structure. Next slide, please. I highlighted the area with a red line here that shows the area that we locate by the addition. And this is the rear portion that will be infilling as well. Now, next are the renderings. This is what we are proposing. We will maintain and preserve the front of the building as it is. As you can see, this rendering reflects the rear addition, but it is not visible for two reasons. The cobula will obstruct the slight increase in height of the roof line, and the bay window and deck is practically not visible from the street. Next, please. This is a very, I, bird's view of the roof line and the changes, that includes the parking spaces on the rear of property, and one, two on the side, three parking on the side yard. Next. The previous slide to that one, it has a very better context of the proposed additions. As you can see, it's minimal, invisible from the street. And as you can see, the proposed addition on the left-hand side is immediately behind this bay window on the left. And I want to emphasize that we are presented in the front, and I will explain it at the conclusion of my presentation about the reason for that. This is a side view of the condo place. And this is an analysis of the properties in the vicinity within 300 feet of the subject property. We are the third largest lot, almost...
I'm sorry, can the bastards move back out? Because now, now I can't see any of the numbers. I apologize. Thank you.
This is, this is an analysis in terms of gross floor area, number of stories and parking for all adjacent structures within the 300 feet radius from the subject property. Our property is the largest lot, almost 3,000 square feet. There are only two lots square in that. Most of the properties, there are, there are significant number of properties that are rooted in family, and that lack parking spaces, and they have an excessive height and, and FAR. So the way that that relates to our project is that we meet all the limitations and requirements, except for the FAR, which will be exceeded just by a fraction of .08, and also, and the use, obviously. Parking is deficient, just by two, or is one-to-one ratio. So this is slightly better than most of the property in Simontive. And then the next slide, please. And this is our property summary of the violations, and, and how we exceed the requirements. As you can see, it's minimal. And then the final is like this. So we, we met in three times with the JPNC zoning committee. We had an aboriginals meeting as well. We offered several concessions, concessions. We reduced the size of addition. We eliminated one unit, and reduced it from six, from seven units to six, which is what we have now. A concern expressed by one of the rear aborder asked us to reduce the rear deck, and was significantly reduced as well. We eliminated an existing side deck on the right side of the property, all the existing. That was a concern to them, we eliminated that. There were several concerns about the trees on the property, which we will address that through design review and landscaping plans by a landscape architect to do that process. We would be installing fences in order to conceal the parking of the aborders. And I imagine that this project would be subject to repeated handling of those items, would be further considered under that. If you go to the final slide, and I apologize for making this long. I just want the board to have as much information as possible on the project. So the front, this building has architectural significance. It is not, according to the Massachusetts Cultural Records Information System, and the Massachusetts Historical Commission, this is not a landmark, and this building has not been, has not been designated yet. Although the area has been inventoried, and it has architectural significance due to a connection with the personal buildings. It's a, it's a Greek revival architecture, and it has some significance. But again, it's not in a landmark district, and it's not a historic landmark, just for context. That being said, we are planning to remodel and refurbish, deferral the structure exactly as is, so there will be no changes to that at all. Everything else will happen towards the rear of the building. And without, I open to any... And without, I open to any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Santana, how does the, the length of the building compare to 309 Chestnut Ave?
309 will be the building on the right.
When you're looking at Google Maps, it's on the left.
If it's on the left, the standing room of our subject property is significantly longer. There is a stair of row house and the addresses are 1, 2, 3 Conter Place. Although that place is open to the public, those are the addresses. And there are three units in each one of those buildings, for a total of nine units. And it is significantly smaller.
Okay.
Our building is smaller buildings in relationship to all adjacent buildings.
And in, in your presentation, I thought I heard you mention basement dwellings. But in the previous slide, it says you eliminated basement dwellings. Can you please confirm?
Initially, we have two basement units. And working with the community and offering concessions, we reduced the number of units from seven to six by eliminating one of the units in the basement.
So there's still a basement dwelling?
There is only one basement, that is.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, we have public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Caroline Peters from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a butters meeting for this project on September 23rd, 2023. And this project went before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee three times. The zoning committee held a split vote on this project and therefore does not recommend either approval or denial on this matter. We received a letter of opposition signed by twelve abotters citing the number of units, insufficient off-street parking and reduced greenery as primary concerns. We have not received any letters of support. And at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, someone just raised their hand. They just lowered it, Madam Chair.
Okay.
They've just raised it again. Okay, we have two, two additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's get with them. Thank you.
Well, someone just sent a request to unmute you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, so first of all, we're happy to see that somebody wants to take care of this neighborhood I saw, which has kind of been in this condition for decades. But the density is just too much. I think the parking is, the situation is untenable. I'm not sure the parking spaces are to code. I think they're supposed to be eight and a half by 20 and they have a few that are seven by 18. And having lived in the neighborhood since 1987, I just want to say, there's nowhere to put the snow. People are not going to be able to park in that backyard. There's insufficient real estate given to trash and disposal if you're having six units. The basement, I have, it's, I guess they're proposing a unit in the new part, but in the old part of the house, I know it's moldy. I don't know if it's, it has to be remediation, just because that home has been so abandoned and so uncared for for so many years. So, you know, we're happy something's going to be done. We just think the scale is enormous for the property. And, you know, it might be the same length as the 309, but this was a nice property that had a backyard. And six units with a basement, it just seems excessive. And we just ask for some recognition of us as residents and taxpayers. That's it.
Thank you.
Mary.
Let's complete public comments. Are there any other raised hands, Stephanie?
Yes. I sent a request to unmute you. State your naming address for the record, please.
I live directly across the street in a three-digger unit, which I own. And I've seen this building from basically 1980, from when I bought my property. And yes, it is deteriorated and I'd like to see something done with it. But again, the density and putting six units in it on that fairly small lot is overwhelming. It initially was a two, registered as a two-family. So now they want to make six units, which seems obviously excessive. You put six parking spots in it, you know that already the area is overwhelmed by parking on the street. This is going to bring more parking into it from people that visit the other people. And again, this presents parking issues for the people that live here. So it just seems that they're cramming just too much into this, this building. And even though they want to build more in the back, it just presents more density.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Santana, did you want to respond briefly?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I just wanted to recall that of these two abotters, that the parking spaces, she's correct. There are half of the spaces are eight and a half by 20, the other half is seven by 18. And that is an acceptable, acceptable dimensions by code. Fifty percent of them cannot exceed seven by 18, which we have. We are insufficient in terms of the excessive requirement for parking, which is 1.25 per unit. And that brings the required number of spaces to eight, and we only have six, which is the ratio of one to one. So that definitely significantly reduces the number of, of all the street parking that may be required if, if needed. And the other thing is that this project is within less than a quarter of a mile of public transportation. So it's also transit oriented, which is one of the things on the draft, it changes for the zoning code. In terms of, in terms of available space, this is a very large amount by Boston standards, it's almost 10,000 square feet. And the reason why we are able to accommodate all those parking spaces and still comply with all the setbacks and use of an open space is an, is an attachment to the fact that it's greenlit and that we will, for the most part, stay within the existing footprint of the building, with exceptional infill.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were comments from the Disabilities Commission. I don't know if Mr. Santana is aware of this.
Feel free to read them into the record, please.
The proposed building appears to have no accessible entrance. As the pro, as the project includes extensive renovations, at least one of the common entrances should be made accessible.
Was there another question or comment from a board member? I just want to have them all.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Regarding the trash, so I see it on the landscape plan. It's behind space number five. There's an enclosed trash recycling area. It looks like the door or, you know, kind of gate, whatever it would be, opens up in orientation with the front. I'm just wondering how that would function since it opens onto a grass area, you know? Who's picking it up? Are they bringing bins out to the street? Is it private pickup? Those questions.
So disability, disability and then trash, can you address those two?
Absolutely. In terms of the disability, I was not aware of that, but I'd be happy to answer that. First of all, the 521 C M R, Architectural Access Board renovations, requires that if you do substantial renovations to the entrance of a building, then that entrance, if there are multiple dwellings, has to comply with the access code. Because of the character of this building, we are not altering the entrance, the main entrance. The main entrance will remain and under that code, it can stay non-accessible. That being said, there is a slope walkway to the basement unit that we can make it, it is accessible. And we can detail those plans and make that unit accessible if need be. And finally, with respect to the trash, and also twelve and more units are required to meet the accessibility requirements. We are only six and that puts us in a different category, except for the entrances. In terms of the trash, those are issues that were raised during our meetings with the community. But as you understand, plans presented to the C B A, those are not construction documents. And there are a lot of details, such as that, that will be worked out and developed and developed further during the B P D A design review process. That might not be a final location or perhaps even adequate for the storage of garbage or even removal of the store, which was one of the raised questions during the meetings. But we definitely will address that, it will be compliant.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I have one more raised hand that just went up.
Okay, last raised hand.
305 Chestnut, Unit One.
Hi, I'm 301 Chestnut. I just wanted to acknowledge that the trash was brought up at multiple meetings. Like it, it just was a concern that was brought up at meetings before. And I think the presenter said that it hadn't been addressed at all. So just wanted to point out, I've attended all the meetings and it has been a concern for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes B P D A design review to preserve existing historic detailing for the addition to complement the historic structure. And the second proviso would be to allow B P D A to do a site plan review to ensure that there is an accessible path to a unit and that you have a solution for, for trash and to kind of review the parking layout to ensure adequate maneuverability.
Okay, is there a second?
Take one.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Braza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move on to the re-discussions scheduled for 11:30. The first case has been deferred, so that takes us to case B O A 1341015 with the address of 146 M Street. If the applicant can afford their representative's phone, they will be pleased to report.
Stan, I'm going to send a request to promote you to the cameras.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if the owner is on, but I'm reserved, I'm in Sackville Street in Charlestown, and I can present the project and the architect required.
Okay, we are on to it.
Okay, I think Mr. Sterling is trying to get on.
He had, he had planned to present it.
Mr. Sterling, are you prepared to present?
I, I am on as well. It looks like my video is having some trouble. I'm going to try to protect that.
Yeah, I think you may have to go without video, sir. Can you hear a sound? All right, I just need one of you to proceed.
I'll, I'll start. So the, the project is simply to add a private roof deck to their home at the top floor of this multi-story dwelling on M Street. If you'll scroll down to the next page. Uh, next page too, so. Uh, pretty basically, they live on the top floor of this unit. And we would be adding a spiral staircase within the building to go up to a private roof deck above Unit Three. We had previously proposed a deck in the rear of the building, or a stair in the rear of the building that the neighbors asked us to make more internal. And that's why we've elected to go with a little bit unconventional interior spiral staircase. But that's what kind of fits with the larger unit in this South Boston apartment. So you see here, a plan of the third floor in the middle going, the roof deck itself being 20 feet by 13 foot two. And then a section cut through showing how that, that spiral staircase would work. Next slide, I think that there, there isn't a lot to be seen of how it looks in the elevations. Next slide. I think that that's probably it. And the rest of it's just existing plans, so you can see kind of how it is today. But it's not a huge, not a huge unit, so there weren't a lot of options as to where we could put the stairs in the, in the roof deck.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. O N S first hosted a butters meeting back in September 26th of 2023. The applicant, after receiving feedback from the Civic Association and from a butters, made reductions to the size of the roof deck to address concerns about potential noise nuisance and other issues. After resubmitting those plans, they connected with the City Point Neighborhood Association, which offered their support for the proposal. And our office also received two letters in support from a butters, which we forwarded to this board. That information will refer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one raised hand, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Gwen, sent a request to unmute you.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So what Connor Newman is saying is correct, most of it. I do want to go on the record as stating that a butters meeting was held in 2022. And suddenly, this project came before a C B A hearing of this year, of March and April of 2024. So we were quite surprised that this came forward. We did ask for another abotters meeting since it was over a year. And Connor Newman denied that request, but did allow the proponent to come before the City Point Neighborhood Association. So I want that on the record insofar as process. The City Point Neighborhood Association did in fact vote to support this rendition of this roof deck. But we would like to state that we don't want this to set precedent on M Street for roof decks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's one additional raised hand.
Laura?
Laura, you can unmute, so.
Thank you, guys. Good afternoon, members and members of the board. This is Laura for Coastal Plains Office. Coastal Plains would like to go on record in opposition due to a lack of community process and engagement. And specifically, the neighborhood A butters meeting that was held in 2022. And no A butters meeting has been held in over a year and a half. This had provided no opportunity for A butters and neighbors unless they were both members and attended the Neighborhood Association meeting to refresh their memory on this project, on this project or examine any changes that may have been made during this extensive period of time. It is wholly unreasonable with the amount of development and community meetings in South Boston that neighbors and A butters would be able to weigh in an informal opinion on this proposal with the last A butters meeting nearly a year and a half ago. In addition, it is unfair for new neighbors who may not have lived here in 2022 at all and have no knowledge of this project that requires Sony relief from the city nearby. Coastal Plains respectfully requests that this proposal be denied due to the precedent this will set. And so that the legitimate community process and A butters meeting can take place without neighbors having to go back to their notes and memories for a meeting that happened in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I think we've resolved the audio and video issues we're having for it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to request the variance for this. I'm Sam Sterling, I'm the owner, with my wife Catherine Sterling here, live both at 146 M Street. In response to the comments about the, the lack of engagement with the community process over the last year and a half, during the first abotters meeting, we had no opposition to, to votes of support. And likewise, in response to. Uh, and likewise, uh, in response to the, the comment that there hasn't been, uh, conversation with the community over the last year and a half, um, that's, that's not true. Um, there was flaring, uh, as to the Civic Association meeting prior to, uh, the meeting with the Land and City Point Neighborhood Association. Uh, and likewise, uh, in between the Butters meeting, uh, and the last Butters meeting, or not the last Butters meeting, the last, um, Neighborhood Association meeting, um, we, we met with the Neighborhood Association again to present the first set of plans, uh, which was a larger deck which would be reduced in size due to the Neighborhood Association's comments about it. So just wanted to clear that up, um, as well as, uh, refer to the existing letters of support and, and, uh, further emphasize that we have the City Point Neighborhood Association's support for this project.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, um, I would like to make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, um, next we have case B O A one-five-six-three-five-eight-four with the address of two Hillsborough Street. This project, this case is, uh, comes to us from the Mayor's Office of Housing. And if, if, if the applicant and/or their representative is present, uh, would they explain to the board with?
Right, I'm, I'm going to make your panelists.
Stephanie, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Adam McFerran, built from New Atlantic Development. Uh, my business address is two thirty-six Huntington Ave in Boston. Um, with me today is also Bill Metz and Hari also from New Atlantic Development and Kendra Halliwell of Icon Architecture. I'm here today presenting number two Hillsborough. This project is an offshoot of the Humphrey Street Artist Studios project located just to the east of the site. In twenty twenty-two, working with the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture and the artists at the Humphrey Street Studios, we were able to help the artists form a nonprofit, secure financing, and purchase their building. With funding provided by the city and private sources, we were able to preserve the affordable studio space in perpetuity for a diverse group of long-term tenants. A total of forty-five studios have been preserved, providing affordable workspace for artists, including painters, photographers, sculptors, graphic artists, woodworkers, mixed media artists, a blacksmith, and architect, and many others, many of whom operate small businesses out of their studios, providing employment opportunities in addition to their art. Included in the acquisition of this building was a vacant lot behind the Humphrey Street Studios, located at the end of Hillsborough Street, tucked in behind the recently completed Indigo Block. Working with the artists at Humphreys, the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, the Mayor's Office of Housing, we create, we created a program consisting entirely of affordable condos ranging from studios to three bedrooms, with eighteen of the twenty-one units being designed as live-work units with a preference for certified artists. In addition to the live-work units, the building will have display space throughout the common area, a gallery at the lobby, and shared workspace in the basement. The zoning relief requested includes use regulations for multifamily residential, artist-mix-use, accessory parking, dimensional regulations for F A R, number of stories, height, lot width, and rear-year occupancy in addition to parking and loading requirements. The project has also included, this project also includes the abandonment of an unimproved section of Hillsborough Street. If approved, this project will create twenty-one units of desperately needed affordable housing by developing a underutilized vacant lot directly adjacent to the Upphams Corner commuter rail stop. The building is designed to be passive house certified, one hundred percent electric with zero emissions. As part of our outreach efforts, we have met with the Butters one-on-one, held community meetings with the BPDA, and met with the D S N I Sustainability Development Committee. And we've received an overwhelming amount of support. Um, with us, we have overlooked fifty layers of support from neighbors and Butters. Additionally, the project has already received its funding award from the Mayor's Office of Housing and approval from the BPDA. Without applause and take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Stephanie? You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Stephanie Silva, and I'm a Housing Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. The Mayor's Office of Housing supports this fully affordable homeownership project and has been working with the team since their application for funding in fall twenty twenty-three. The team was awarded funds based upon their response to M O H's annual funding round R F P for affordable housing development proposals. And we will continue to work with the team as they progress toward construction. Thank you.
Liam?
Liam?
Hello, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramos from Council of Fitzgerald's office. Obviously, they go on record supporting the proposal.
I have one additional raised hand, Madam Chair.
Please.
I sent a request to unmute you. State your naming address for the record, please.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Camille Platt. I'm actually the BPDA Project Manager for the Two Hillsborough Street project. Uh, so I am speaking in support of the fully affordable homeownership project today. Uh, we at the BPDA held a virtual public meeting for the project on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, just about one month after they filed. Meeting was well-attended and nothing but positive feedback on the current state of the project. Um, our review team worked with the proponents to ensure neighborhood context was met and standards adhere to. Um, so again, going on record in support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, uh, I think this is a really good project. I appreciate the affordable housing in perpetuity. And with that, I make a motion of approval with BPDA review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay, with the next two cases deferred, it looks like, uh, we are on break till one?
Be a correct moment, Madam Chair.
All right, see you all then.
Recording stopped.